We're recording our meeting. Be broadcasting also to an audience at home, so we'll see them wrapped here. Just wanted to announce that. The chairs, we are broadcasting.
Okay, this is the planning board meeting of February 19th, 2025. We'll start with a roll call. Brian Falcon.
Here.
Jen Bluestein. Paul Clark.
Here.
Charlie Palmasano is not here. Jamie Pennington.
Here.
Rick Tainter.
Here.
Jack LeCarr.
Here.
And I didn't hear. Mark Wright is here, but not quite officially.
All right. And this is a joint hearing with the Planning and Development Committee. This is Chair Shan, Counselor Harmon.
Here.
Counselor Preston.
Here.
So we have a forum of the committee. We also have on item tonight, a committee of the whole item. So I will acknowledge that Counselor Donahue, Counselor Wright, and Counselor McCauley are all sitting here.
Okay, so we will open the joint public hearing with the Council Planning and Development Committee and committee of the whole related to the Brown School overlay district. I think they will turn it over to Counselor Shan and Director Ford to comment on the zoning amendment.
Sure, just a little bit general in the context of the city has actually been working a long time to see the redevelopment of the Brown School property. So it's worth noting that it's a long time coming. I think we're at a good point now. This zoning change that we're talking about tonight is really to facilitate that moving ahead. The existing zoning contemplates a set of scenarios. And we're essentially making a few tweaks to that scenario to allow the viable project that's been discussed for the city council to proceed ahead. I think that's largely what we'll see tonight. If you're familiar with the ordinance, it's multifamily housing, preservation of public park space on the property, and obviously parking for the residential units with the preservation of the building. We call it preservation restriction. With that in mind, that's a brief recap of what the ordinance does.
Thank you, Director Ford. So Counselor Donahue and I, and along with Counselors Zee, are the sponsors of this. A quick just review of it. We are basically trying to align ourselves with what this data plan is. Thrilled that we can have 29 units of senior affordable, which is what we're rezoning here. And the other item that we included in this was making sure that the parking will accommodate all of the residents in addition to some additional spaces for guests and for deliveries. Another item that we are addressing here is the demolition of the accessory structures and making sure that some of the dimensional and screening spots for the buffer zones are adequate for the neighbors to make sure that the plantings are appropriate for the area next to where the gym is being raised. And then it addresses the special permit procedure and likely the site plan review that we expect the planning board will be going through. With that being stated.
The Office of Planning and Development, based on some feedback, typically when ordinances are coming forward, sometimes there is nothing to change in them. Occasionally, as an ordinance is proposed, there are things that are recommended by various parties. And so in the previous weeks, a few suggestions coming from the zoning administrator, discussions with the development team at ZETA, planning board members and others. There were a few tweaks that seemed to make sense to suggest for consideration by the city council and by the planning board. To go through those very briefly for you. They are not in the sponsored version of the amendment, but rather in this version here. Make sure you can all see that. So in this amendment here, you can see they're recommending changes from the Office of Planning and Development. They're all consistent with the proposed amendment. They're not significant in that they're not substantive changes. They're more clarity being added to the ordinance. First change was just that, and this is typical protocol. We talk a lot about zoning ordinances and codes in the city, and there are a lot of them. And they take a while sometimes to update them. So one of the things we try to do is keep them efficient and clean and as accurate as possible at any given time, like any other ordinance. And so the suggestion here was just that if we're not really contemplating one of the scenarios that's in here, then it would make sense to delete that scenario from the ordinance now, rather than leaving it in place and having to see that extra content confusing field quotes perhaps down the road. And this is true of any ordinance, by the way, not just this one. So the suggestion what here was essentially that abuse services is not being retained on site and the gymnasium is not being retained. It's not clear why we would need, you know, a half page or a page worth of provisions dealing with those scenarios. So that would just strike out those provisions thereby saving everybody else confusion and time down the road cleaning up the ordinance.
And so I did discuss that with the other counselor, Counselors Zee, the other sponsor, and he was fine with that. There's a different way you want to, instead of doing it in a graph, you could do something different. Because obviously if we're just down to the gym being raised, it's a better way to delineate that in this ordinance.
Yes, thank you. Yes, agreed. Effectively, the table will become 51 cellar paragraph, right? Agreed. Yep. Makes perfect sense. Again, this is just efficiency for the ordinance's structure. Obviously, we see amendment as proposed with the unit change adjustment. That's not been altered here. One change that came up in discussions with the Affordable Housing Trust was the fact that 62 is actually a year that's more consistent to use in a lot of these programs and references at the state and federal level. So the suggestion was that we realigned to 65, which was in the original code by ordinance, 262.
We agree.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying as we're going. The, as I was looking at the demolition, the, keep in mind that this section here, number five, a lot of this text that you're seeing here, the original text and then the red sort of markup that you're seeing in there. These are basically suggested changes to the written form and the structure of that paragraph or that section. None of this has changed in the intent of it, but what it does is helps to clarify here what we're talking about is there's a, seems to be a general preference and a desire to have the demolition, the removal of gym, the whatever referred to as the interstitial space in between. That's the hallway, the kitchen, some awkward sort of stairwell areas that can't be used for housing. They're awkward, you know, components in the property right now and the boiler room, I should say, as well. And so here, the original language, it seemed to be clarified a little bit. This was again, in talking with the development team, talking with the zoning administrator and others. I think a question or two that come from planning board members, just clarifying in there what's included, what's not. It also helps, as we've been discussing, which portions of the building are being preserved. In this case, the original Brown School building, the 1975 infill that's facing on Milk Street. But the rest of the building, including the gym, that interstitial hallway space, the boiler room, would be demolished. We would keep the chimney, that's their chimney stack that's there. But this would essentially clarify for the zoning administrator, for the planning board. So there's no dispute, no ambiguity, no confusion, which things are allowed to be done by a special permit. And that's the multifamily housing review. The adaptive reuse proposal coming in from ZETA would, down the road, have a special permit hearing before the planning board. Obviously, a preservation restriction is part of that and these other components that we see. But the main thing that's distinguished here in this section is that the, there is no special permit required for the demolition work. So if there's general consensus that the demolition, the demolition components of the building are not historic in nature, that are necessarily contributing in some way, and it would be more efficient for us to expedite that work, which does not seem to make sense that we also have a likely discretionary permit review by the planning board to get to that same end result. So the suggestion here is essentially the structure is essentially to distinguish between a special permit review where the development team needs to show landscaping and screening and appropriate improvements in the property, you know, following this plan versus the demolition work that can happen near term, that can be expedited where there's not really much, you know, disagreement on that. And I have reached out to the Historic Commission. They seem to be on board with that component as well and are supportive of that scope. I have reached out as well to the Preservation Trust. I don't think I've heard back from them definitively, but did have a good discussion with them and believe that they may be also capable to offer support for that in the coming days. But generally speaking, this is just to allow those things to proceed. The other thing that is clarified in here is we have to keep in mind here that this ordinance is calling for a special permit from the planning board for the Brown School reuse. But there's another section of the ordinance that says, law ordinance, this is the layering of regulations. So the site plan review section is required by this multifamily housing and the house project. So one of the things that came up, and it came up from both planning members, it came up in our discussion in the office, was it oftentimes is necessary and beneficial to allow the planning board latitude, while they're reviewing the landscape plan, the improvements proposed by a development team, regardless of what it is, to have flexibility in finding the best possible design for that. So if we are too specific sometimes in what those improvements have to be, meaning how many trees, what size fence, and you know, so forth, it doesn't necessarily leave enough latitude, putting aside the development team, it doesn't allow enough latitude for our own city board to get the best plan for the neighborhood. So again, the language here essentially would just know that this is down the bottom, giving enough latitude for the planning board to waive or modify those requirements in that section upon a finding that this plan that's being presented is a better outcome there in that scenario. So looking at screening for butters between, say, the parking area and the adjacent property. This allows the board to look at that with flexibility and go with the best possible scenario. So that's all that's there.
Quick question.
Yes.
Can someone tell us what the chimney stack is?
On the original Brown School building, if you're standing on the backside, I can, if it's what's wanting, I can follow with a visual. But on the backside of the building, on the original Brown School building, is a chimney stack going up in the footroom. And that goes, the boiler room is actually half sort of more submerged in the ground. And you see above ground is only like the top third of it. And that chimney stack goes down underground. So that chimney stack that you're seeing is between the boiler room. There's a finger that's staying in the property that doesn't really contribute much and more when everything else is demolished. But the original Brown School building, that's actually got a certain integral to it. So that stick, and you'd see that sticking up above the roof line as it is today.
So I didn't, Counselor Zee didn't have any concerns with that piece. I think there's probably going to be some discussion in planning committees when we get to that.
Sure.
Overall, we were fine with the rewording.
Sure. Thank you. And then this comment here about item C, which is just again landscaping and screening within 10 feet of a public way. There's definitely a desire to maintain sightlines and so forth. But again, same parallel to the site plan review section was just that it makes a lot of sense to give the planning board some latitude to find out the best possible solution at a given location. So as the board looking at entrances, the driveways, locations, adjacent properties and so forth, to be able to adapt and modify for the best possible landscaping and screening and so forth that goes with the site. And again, that's, these are all the options for the city council. It's just suggestion for consideration by both the planning board and its recommendation and the city council going forward. I believe this last one, I believe, was just a section number correction from five to seven, which is just a reference. So that was it from the office, just again mainly to help out with the structure of the ordinance going forward. Sometimes things, you know, new ideas come up from folks and this just helps to keep things moving forward.
Comments?
Counselor Preston.
Yeah, I just have a quick question on C5, yes, D5. Sorry, section C, number five. So I guess I'm just, I was of the impression that the interstitial space in the gym go. So I'm confused a little bit by what this 1975 infill is. Is that the stairwell that's there?
The 1975 is, so the building is actually a U shape. The original building is a U shape facing Milk Street. And so what happened in 1975, they filled in that component. That's why we see a rectangular building today. So that's the larger glass windows that you see facing Milk Street. And so that's the 1975 component. We're not obviously expecting that portion to be demolished. That's going to be reused.
I see.
Yeah.
So it's not the interstitials?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I didn't, this is, it's not showing in here, but in some of these studies that we've had done for the Brown School, it depicts as a graphic, color coded the dates of the additions. So you can kind of get a better rendering of that. And this paragraph is meant to parallel that description so that there's no confusion with that historical folks, no confusion with the zoning administrator or anything else.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
I guess one thing we haven't noted is that we are specifically making sure that the playground is where you are here listed in number six, that those have been saved and that will be all by.
Yes, yes, thank you. And I also apologize, Counselor Cameron's online here and you had raised this again.
Yeah, hi. Quick question comment on the top of page three where the table has the number of dwelling units. So under the gymnasium raised, where it now is now at 28 dwelling units. My question slash comment, I think the latest, the mix when this was proposed did include some two bedrooms. So, you know, I don't know if, I'm going to make up numbers a little bit here. So say it was four two-bedroom units, i.e. two occupants, two separate bedrooms within a two-bedroom unit. And so if there were four and then the other 25 were single units, one bedrooms. If the developer, I believe they said they were going to do a market analysis to sort of see what, you know, what the market would be looking for. If they made a shift to having one bedroom, all one bedroom units instead of a couple or several two-bedroom units, they might have the same number of occupants in the building, but the number of dwelling units would be a little over, you know, could possibly be a little over 29. Would that be a, you know, if it stays at 29, is that a problem down the road in terms of, you know, so say they end up with proposing, and the math may not work here, say 31 or 33 or 32 dwelling units, again, with the same number of people occupants because it's all one bedrooms now instead of a couple of two bedrooms. Is that going to be a problem for the planning board in terms of issuing a special permit? Or is there some, and if it is, could there be some language to modify that a little bit? Again, I'm not looking to, I'm looking to keep the impact the same as has been proposed. But, but again, the unit count might differ a little bit with the same impact. And then are we going to be preventing approval down the road? Thank you.
I would just offer for that, I mean, the unit count is clearly the integral element here for threshold. So that's the, that's what being, you know, regulated here. If there is a different scenario that someone wants to do that's outside of this ordinance, you know, again, we could talk about whether something like, you know, like bedrooms is discussed further in this ordinance. But if there's another scenario, that might require coming back to the city council for amendment to the zoning. But as currently contemplated, the ordinance and the allowance on the multifamily is determined based on the units, not necessarily the bedrooms.
So it sounds like.
And sorry, the parking is based on the unit, not based on bedrooms.
Right. So if it's, even if it's, if 29 units, just the back of, or am I having two bedrooms, it's still 29 units?
Yes, exactly. Yeah, right. This ordinance caps it at 29 and the bedrooms is not the factors, determine the parking spaces, it's the number of units.
Right, so dwelling units, not bedroom.
Right.
Dwelling unit is.
Right, right. So again, to Counselor Cameron's question, if you want to talk about a different type of regulation or element in there, that's different than the structure here. Here, it's just saying dwelling units, parking spaces.
Did that answer your question, Counselor Cameron?
Yes, I suppose. Thank you.
Other questions? All right, we want to open up public comments.
Yeah, let's open up the floor for public comment. Just a reminder that we'd like to limit comments for about two minutes if possible.
Thank you. Shining up to the.
That's good. Yeah.
Good evening. I'm Judy Timman from 39 Lime Street. And I just want to state that I am in fully support, I fully support this zoning amendment to support the developer creating a fully affordable development at the Brown School. And I would just ask you to really look at the details of the different agreements that you have with the developer and make sure they, which I'm sure you have, make sure they line up. You've got an agreement with the housing trust right now. You've got this zoning. And I'm sure you're going to have some kind of a memorandum of understanding with the developer in terms of purchasing. So just to make sure that there's not any conflict amongst those different documents so that this can go as smoothly as possible. And I also, I echo Counselor Cameron's question regarding number of units. That might have to be tweaked in terms of funding from the state. If they go to the state and it looks like they do have to go to all, maybe one bedroom, they might have to go up a unit or two. And I would hate to have them, you know, have to come back to the, to the, to the city for more zoning changes. So that's all I'm asking is some flexibility and some, you know, definitely line up those documents. Make sure they're all saying the same thing so this can go as smoothly as possible. And I, and I know you're not going to answer me, but I didn't see that there was a specific restriction on the, the level of affordability in, in the zoning. There, I think it really has to say 50% or lower because that's really what the developer's going to do. That's what we've been fighting for and that's what they've committed to. So I hope that that gets enshrined in the, in the zoning. Thank you.
Are you with us online? Mary Ann, are you with us online? You're welcome to address the board of the committee.
Great, thank you. My name is Mary Ann V C from 10 Ken Street. And I just want to echo and reinforce what Judy Timman just said about all the zoning changes and make sure everything lines up. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Beth Track, do you want to address the board and committee?
Hi, thank you. Beth Track, 144 Low Street. I just wanted to quickly say that I do support this zoning change. This is a really great move forward. It ticked a lot of boxes for just about everybody. You know, neighbors, housing advocates, and it's so rare right now that we can do something that really brings people together. So let's get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. So that's it. Any other comment?
I made two major hearings. And I briefly just wanted to echo Judy's distinction and then planning board and council on moving forward.
Any other comment?
Mr. Major, what would your address again?
Sorry, just talking before vote.
My name is Georgia Adele, 7 Neptune Street. Be here, welcome. Thank you all for taking us up in a precipitous manner, timely manner, all night. I'm also very much in support of this project. It's been almost like a miracle to see it come through the way it has after a long period of gestation. And so I will look at the details, make sure all the Ts are crossed and proceed. This, I'm a member of the Housing Choice Coalition. I think it seems like everybody that's maybe the top is a member. Oh, this is the consensus of the city as far as I can tell is to bring affordable or, or housing. I just hope that as we move forward, we can see some workforce out there as well. Senior house, senior housing is great. I'm senior. I'm thinking about it. But I, that's the really biggest need. The Red Board had a proud history of, not too long ago, being a balanced. The Board of Appeals, is this what this is?
Planning Board.
Planning Board. Will be in support of that kind of motion for our town.
Any other comments? Close the public comment and continue the deliberation. They did the whole. Mr. Tainter has a comment.
I have some further suggestions, but I can't actually leave the ordinance up here.
Sure.
Go through, I have some comments that I think, a couple of comments that I'd like to offer to clarify, make the ordinance a little clearer. Then a couple of suggestions to make it more flexible. The first thing is in section 32C in the table. My suggestion is simply to, oh, this is, could you show your markup?
Sure, yes. Sorry, just to be clear, what I'm going to pull up here just to show is the version of the office where you see the Office of Planning and Development's recommendation for some cleanup of it I just mentioned a few minutes ago. So you're seeing that markup here.
So I was going to add a couple of markers. The first thing is simply to delete that first column that's called scenario because there are, we don't have any scenarios anymore. That would be the first thing I would suggest, just, you know, you're already simplifying it by getting rid of two of the rows. And you can get rid of that first column because the only scenario you have left is gymnasium leaves. So I don't think we need to have that because unless, and what Counselor Shan said was earlier was you might want to redo the format. It'd be more of a paragraph format. The second thing is paragraph five under that table there. The, what you have right now, what the, in the first sentence, it's, it's fine, except that I think it's still a little bit unclear. And I was going to suggest that that could read demolition of the one-story gym, kitchen, connecting hallways and locker room being attached to the 1920 schoolhouse shall be permitted as a right. In other words, you don't need to talk about things that were, right now, the things that were added to it in 1920. Simplify it. Also, the second paragraph under five is a, ends with a quotation mark. And there's no beginning to that quotation. So those are just kind of picking up things. The two things that I think are really important or more substantive are in section 32D, the dimensional regulations. I would suggest deleting all of paragraph three. So paragraph three is screening and says screening and space buffers. I think you probably mean screening and open space buffers. But it's, it's a very specific regulation. And because it's a specific regulation, it's not waivable by the planning board. We also have landscaping requirements in the site plan regs that aren't there. So in case, I think that just to allow for some creativity, adjusting the screening to a lot, I suggest removing section three of the AV entity. Because then moving out to the site plan review or negotiating to get a better, more a more appropriate type of screening that might be called for by the specific regulations there. And then the last thing is in section 32E, the last paragraph, see, what is it? Paragraph one D. So this requires a traffic impact study, which is an additional cost. I think the city has decided they like this plan. The traffic impact study doesn't call for the developer to do anything, just says study and come up with, tell us what the impacts are. I think the city, the city has decided 29 units at this point is an appropriate level of development. And so I don't see the purpose of requiring the developer to spend the money to do a traffic impact study, but it's not going to give us anything useful in return. So those are, those are my, the things that I had came prepared. I guess the third thing I would suggest is maybe look at that 29 units and perhaps consider putting it to 31 just in case, just in case they have to go from two bedrooms to one bedroom unit. It doesn't seem like it's, they're still going to have to meet all the other development requirements. And it doesn't seem there's going to be a major incremental impact.
Do you have an issue with parking?
Well, they may, but I think that we can figure that out. I was just going to say is, let's, let's give that extra two units of flexibility and then through the site plan process, we can decide. I don't want to play around with parking requirements. That's kind of the third rail.
That's pointing.
So those are my suggestions.
Right, on, on that point, then you, you talked about deleting all of section three, but we still want to just keep the intro centered, saying that we do one required screening and space buffer and then leave the flexibility of how to achieve that.
But it's already required by site plan. So that's why I figured, right now, the way it's written, we have two conflicting or overlapping regulations. I would just prefer to have it in one place.
I know Counselor Zee was minimal, but Seth suggests that just go in the report and we'll work on it moving back to this. Further discussion? Counselor Donahue?
Yes, thank you. There's one thing I wasn't sure when it might be to bring up that. I was thinking a lot about this and, you know, it's. I was thinking a lot about this and, you know, if the developer is going to have to in any way do anything to the sidewalks, I think it should be preferred because of the nature of the, it should have been built in more seniors and, you know. I worry that down the line, it could come up. You know, the people could want aesthetic over the safety access around it, but it's going to be used for, you know, at least if you have people with disabilities. The issue, so I didn't know if there was an area of preference.
We can certainly bring that up and give it away.
I couldn't get it.
Nope, thank you.
That's the kind of thing that we could discuss during the site plan review process. You know, public, public based comments during the site plan review process. We certainly want to look at that. And I guess I wouldn't want to have it in your, it's part of the suggestion because if you have it in your, we don't normally have, we don't normally have sidewalk materials in a zoning work.
If it comes up though.
Yes.
Counselor, thank you. Just for the sake of putting our record for public, if we don't address the unit count and the project needs a change to what we have proposed, what would that do in terms of timeline and requirements? We would have to publish or advertise another public hearing?
We would have to do it, bring in the zoning amendment, re-advertise, go through this process. Yes, that's what we would have to do. Further discussion? All right.
I have a motion to close. I think Finn's not here, so we can do it.
She's not.
So all those in favor? The period is closed.
You don't have to. We can continue it to our committee who want to. I thought I would recommend there's motion for that.
They're moved.
Second. All those in favor of continuing the public hearing with the planning and development committee?
Aye.
Three to zero. All right.
Just going to make a motion. I'd like to move that the board recommend approval of the zoning ordinance with the changes recommended in the planning development. And also with the five changes that I listed going through my proxy. And also with increasing the maximum number of units to thirty-one.
Second.
All those in favor? Moves?
Great. Mission.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourned the planning and development committee part of this for Gary, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much.
See you all in there.
You as well. Enjoy the rest of your meeting.
Now realizing. I thought it was double sided.
Moving on to general business. We'll have one item on the eighth Hope Avenue, approval not required.
Good evening, Sheriff Bruce. My name is Ryan Fung, here on behalf of Liz Finn, For Hope Avenue, and the Marcos City of April Avenue, to our request for your endorsement of the approval not required for X. This plan would create small sliver of a lot from Eighth Hope Avenue to invade to For Hope Avenue and resolve a little lot line disparity. And since the sliver of land lot B has frontage on Hope Avenue, does not qualify as a subdivision. And further, its margin is not a billable lot, clearly, per the instructions for the application online. Would that entertain any questions? Otherwise, thank you for your consideration.
Just for the office, this is pretty typical. We actually, this is probably the most commonly seen in our planning that we see in the report. But, you know, a lot line shift for to do with a fence or some other encouragement, things like that. So it's not uncommon. Does really effectively something. They changed a lot. It's really just resolving that minor issue. Recommend endorsement.
Any other questions or comments?
Just, just one question. The fence on the back of the lot belongs to number eight? So there's no issue given the fact that that lot B only goes.
No issue. And to accept there's any fences in transfer, the owners are brought to resolve that.
Any other questions or comments? That will entertain a motion to endorse.
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 I move that we endorse the approval number four.
Second.
Hold it second. All those in favor? Opposed? Or endorse?
Awesome. Thank you very much. They should have it for you tomorrow. So keep it happening.
Onto the meeting, approval of minutes. We have minutes from one fifteen.
I sent in some comments.
Rick had the comments.
Anybody else have comments? Okay, we have a motion to approve as.
I move to approve the one fifteen, twenty, twenty-five minutes amendment.
Second.
Second.
Second, you two guys. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, the minutes from two five, twenty twenty-five. I sent you a comment. No.
No, I did also.
I did also later today.
So can I have a motion?
Move to approve the two five, twenty twenty-five minutes amended.
Second.
You must be the second. All those in favor? Opposed?
Did we need to approve the nine eighteen executive session minute?
They weren't added to the agenda yet, so.
Mel and Jan saying that we are moving.
Those are still moving.
It sounds like you're making sure to get on the next agenda. Yeah, yeah.
I have edits from rec.
Yeah.
Well, we're, there's no pending litigation now.
Just, I didn't know with, just as a general matter, when you've got executive session minutes, do they become public?
We would, they would not be public if we were still having the matter. It was open. We'd go back into executive section to review it. And then, you know, basically those would still be closed records until we're done with the.
Well, then you publish them after.
Then they're published. Here, the matter is resolved. Essentially, there's no further pending litigation or, you know, came up in here. So this is now, you know, news. So I guess we can just face the day. It might be this, it wasn't carried on the agenda.
I had some question. There was some stuff at the end, I think, that I was unsure.
There's something you were unsure about back in there, and I made all your changes.
I think the question was something about how do we.
Yes, format, but yeah.
Okay, on to other items for discussion.
So the two.
Dory Avenue.
Yeah. So we had a very, thank you, very good meeting last Thursday. Unfortunately, I have not had time since then to revise the scope of work for straight up basis for discussion. So I'm actually going to be using tomorrow morning, which was going to be with our regular time. So I was going to set up our recurring for the Thursday after, but it's not available anyway tomorrow. But that allows me to actually, because tomorrow I actually have time where I'm not in meetings like all day. So, so I'll be able to finish that and send that out to the committee review and, and then we'll take it from there. I still have not gotten that closure from the grant manager, but I will swivel back to them as well. I'm kind of limbo to be able to execute any contract until they close that move. But to our discussion, this is basically just to make sure that we're on the same page about the scope of master development plan. About sort of general hierarchy of how we want things over there. And then using that to, you know, find out to the pedestrian scale, village, you know, new grade work, you know, character that we want as opposed to the street. It'll help us to visualize that. The consultant's work will focus more on the visualization. And we will focus more on the sort of writing that we can use their bandwidth, the limited, you know, resources we have here. These grants are huge, they're up to thousands of dollars. But to be able to illustrate that to the general public, show that we can change, that can be made there, changing the zoning. Science regulations, I wasn't able to get that in the last council bag in because it's required some further edits. But that is, as I mentioned previously, to update clarity in the zoning ordinance. A couple of other things have been suggested by a few others. Deal with things like, a couple of things like clutter. And again, clarity as to which division of the city are seeing, foreseeing which areas. More housekeeping than other things, I would say, in that ordinance change. But that will be coming forward as well. And so we'll have a hearing this one year on that one. I think depending on the timing of when we get, the one that we'll be following, that one is even map line adjustment that we have to make. I'd like to, just for the efficiency of everybody's purposes, is have all that done in one night or in one period. If we could, I think I'll refer you on how you want to handle that with the city council. But I think it would benefit us for efficiency if we can do that one, because that one is more, more or less necessary for participation with blood insurance program. So there's not a whole lot of latitude we have to, to not make updates to the code in the zone, in the maps there. But I want to be able to illustrate for both, we're looking to show that on our city mapping software. The differences will see what the new blood map shows. The FEMA folks don't provide a very good illustration of that resource. We're trying to make sure there's, as well. So the idea there is to roll that out as well. If we can do that zoning here together, like to, just because the science might be more discussion. The FEMA will have some discussion, but again, at the end of the day, I don't see that we have much latitude to not make changes that we're saying to all our constituents, we can't participate in blood insurance program, which is not. So that's pretty, that's pretty routine process of updating those. And so that's housekeeping as well. Anyway, I don't post that. Questions in other areas.
I just have a question on the timeframe. We're always struggled with when we have to do what on the calendar. So from the sign ordinance, when I know we've been talking about that, when is that? When will that mature to a point of having a hearing?
You'll basically be having a hearing in March, April timeframe on that one. I would say late March, early April, joint public hearing on the science ordinance. And so, you know, you're running through the same, you know. In this case, I'm probably the one to briefly summarize some of the changes that are being made. I don't really need to go through the language markup. That's me, I can identify some of the changes that go with spending time in the meeting here.
Question about, we had a little bit of an email back and forth about stories or documents. I had shared a bunch of documents, and I didn't know whether you come up with an idea of where everything should be.
Unfortunately, the city side has not, they set that perfectly. Like our, we have a system set up for that, but it works better for internal staff because we have a city account. So that's the part we have a little difficulty. So having, I don't actually frankly have a preference. It was more just like the idea of being able to share ideas, particularly with visuals, of what does work and what doesn't work. You know, the coding and writing of the code is one thing, but to show the illustration.
I'm happy to keep stuff on that same.
And that works. That's fine with you. Yeah. I just, I like the idea. I appreciate that. I like the idea that as the committee is working on it, we're sort of, you know, shredding ideas about, you know, the scale and mass of buildings or setbacks and all that kind of stuff. Having examples of those are helpful because it shows the design team, you know, maybe what this group, you know, was repelled on there, but also the general public. And it could be driver stuff, like Rick and I talked about, some of the text of ordinances and things like that as well, person doing that dress up. Those as well. But I was thinking more along the lines of illustrations or photographs of things that you do like, because that's something that any one of us could. You might have ideas of things that you like and you think work well in that area. Just having those available for the discussion, which.
I think, I think that the Burlington's, this stuff is going on in Burlington's to be a real.
Yeah.
And the other.
So I noticed that you've got draft March fifth and April second planning board agendas. And I'm really excited about April second because forty ninety fifty-seven Merrimack Street is, are they coming back to us?
Yes, yes. I'm sorry. I forgot. Yes. I think I probably touched on that briefly, though. No, did we not? Yes. So for those of you who are not, the gas station on Merrimack Street, you know, way near, so all the police stations that's been there for a long time. Finally having, you know, we'll get into the design review process, but finally having, you might recall, a couple of years back. Renee finally coming back with a plan for that property. And I think hopefully we'll see that section of the street essentially reconstructed as part of the city's fabric. And, you know, yeah. So, you know, again, that, I'm happy with the addition of the building was on the list, don't count it for there. That's good framing that up here. Best as you can do on that site. This would be really great. That's the section of the street that everybody has been looking forward to seeing.
Is this the same proposal again?
It's a variation of.
It's built on, yeah.
It's a variation.
There were issues between the two different schemes that we had.
They cannot perform that.
Evolutions in terms of where the units were located.
Looks good.
Yeah. I think, I think it looks good. They did pick a few things. I think it's a good project. You'll have to deal with it all. It is a good project.
I will not be here for the March nineteenth. But you don't have to edit it.
Yeah, nice. Yeah, it's helpful. Thanks, everybody, for like a lot of flagging for states you're going to be able to do any for that, just so we can get.
I will need to sit down.
Oh. You'll bring back planning. Yeah, it'd be a lot of planning issues.
So I think we have associate members here at the table together for the first time. So I want to welcome both of you. I'd ask you to just introduce yourself, say hello. Do you have anything else you want to ask?
I do. I just want to say, when I was sworn in, the assistant clerk mentioned that some of the board members are current mandatory state courses. Really? He asked that. Back to there.
I, I can reach out to clerk's office tomorrow. It's probably just, you probably would have gotten essentially an email from the clerk's office at some points. The Commonwealth for the clerk's office basically pushed out saying, you know, you know, review the, it's basically the, the state's recognition of, you know, not having a conflict of interest. Probably just the generic bond law and process of verifying that you understand the rules. It might be just that they're verifying. I can check if that was.
Yeah, it's in the notes.
If you haven't seen anything, you're probably going to miss anything. But again, I don't know individually. I don't get to the clerk's office with the, well, is that pushing that stuff out now? It's more automated on the lot. Which is different. And that is different. Lot gets bonus points because that's actually a, you know, a planning course specific, not just the, you know, mandatory requirement like a, you know. You know, give more detail about the legal issues involved and procedural stuff with the site, which is great. That's actually, we push that out. That's the CBDC we push out. So if you're able to, there's another one coming up actually, you're going to be pushing out. So if there's any sessions like that, that particularly ones in the area, I actually, one of the things I would like to do, actually, I haven't mentioned while, is we can basically pay them for a couple hundred dollars. We can pay them basically to come here and do a session for us. I love the idea of doing, for instance, a NIP renew rate board. That's for planning board and ZBA. There's other boards that don't quite overlap, you know, the same jurisdiction, but we can obviously have them there for some of the general stuff. But, but particularly for planning board and ZBA, having a training specifically on either site interview or roles and responsibilities of board, you know, planning board and ZBA. That's the kind of, that to me is actually in some ways potentially better for you and all because to be able to attend. So to me, it's worth that relatively low cost to make it available for as many of the planning board and ZBA members. So if that's of interest to you and you have a feeling about one of those or that C D C does, let me know. I like the idea of doing either site interview or roles and responsibilities, maybe, or in some cases, defensive decisions. I like the idea of doing either site interview or roles and responsibilities, maybe, uh, or in some cases, defensive decisions, but though I feel need to keep an eye on that kind of stuff, so. Uh, I, to me, I think it might not fit most, something like site interview, if you're not very familiar with this. But whatever you feel like we're sitting, I'm happy to try to coordinate on that, and, you know, we happen to come here, the boardroom upstairs, the rest of the night, do it over, do.
Absolutely, yeah, that would be, um, okay.
Any, any of those particularly, uh, it's, it's not, it's not, at all.
The more the better.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it enters my submat, we met very much individually, I couldn't be happier to be on the part of the board, because it's sworn in, hopefully very soon. I did have a question, I guess, more for the clerk office, about those requirements for this working process, from the, the state, the, um.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, well, like that information, like the, you're getting an email, that's, I mean, I appreciate that, for you. No one's really said anything about that, when I applied to the board two years ago, that was on the city's website? There was information specific about that, more board members, that's gone now, it's not there anymore, so I don't know if it's even a requirement.
Yeah, sorry, and I don't, I don't, there, there may be some continuity issues, there can be, you know, communication doesn't sometimes work perfectly, and so, it, it should be these days, a certain team, more automated, but it's also like, making sure that, uh, they have the email addresses and they have names. So it might be, and I can check with them tomorrow, I can tell somebody, I can check just to make sure for the entire board. What the status is for each member, just to make sure there's not an issue. Uh, and then let me know, like, we could just make sure, if you had, you know, missing an email that says, please go here, log in, do the, you know, or whatever it is, it's a half hour. Basically saying, I understand, you know, you know, um, you know, recuse if you have.
I assume like password needed or something from the card, I don't know, like, you know, I would, that sort of.
Yeah, I mean, I think you need to log in, but it's basically, yeah, it's, you know, basically just verifying you understand, you know, if any sort of conflict of interest you need to recuse yourself, but that has, right, so. Um, it shouldn't be, you know, it's not private science, but, but, um, it, it might be some gap there in terms of like, maybe an email that didn't get pushed out or something, I guess it's being, my understanding is that they automated through the Commonwealth now. So, somehow it might be, it might be because of the site and the communication laws there, and I can just check and find out what that is, it sounds like, I wasn't aware that it was a, um, I could just check and see what.
I'm glad that the.
Probably JT, yeah, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
One more thing, Andy, I don't know if you saw this email from C D P C this morning, C D T C this morning.
Yes.
But they, they're now offering free membership in the Massachusetts chapter of the American planning association, the planning board is owning.
Ah, yes.
So that, and you'll get, you'll get a newsletter, you get to go to, um, lunches and other events.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe you can share that.
Yeah, I, I, it is funny, because you're saying, I was thinking the C B D C, and so I, I should push that as well, as I look for tomorrow, an email, I'll push that out. Um, I definitely recommend anything like that, so, you know, like I said, with the jerk trainings, you know, blah, it's not for the site interview, recognize, some of them, but. Um, some of them, they do like every season, like, oh, the winter, spring and, and fall, they do like a rotation of those courses, so if they can attend, the time is great. It's just they sometimes do it with another community, or sometimes part of their way across, well, not really convenient probably for you, so. Um, we'll try to get them here to do something specifically for us, but I'll, I can still push out those dates for you, and the way that we've done it typically, the way they have it set now is, because you have to create your own account, it's just, um, it, it just create a login, but basically you register and then just push us, and what they do is they send us the invoice, so that we can pay it for our thing, it's just, you know, witness that was worked. So, um, you went registering yourself, it used to be that you just tell us, I wanna register for this one, we register you. Now it's you register yourself and just send, it pushes us, you know, this invoice essentially. Um, but anyway, um, definitely recommend all.
And I have the motion to.
Move to adjourn?
Any of you guys, non-participators?
Hold on a second. Off this whole set.
All those in favor? Opposed? Be in the adjourn.